You're listening to In My Humble Opinion with Maxilia Robinson and Charles Lewis only on 101.3 Jams.
I know that's right back.
Ms. Max, why they talking like Auntie? That's just Auntie Max is in the background just talking. I M H O Talk Show, Sir Charles, Ms. Max, A A Ron. Uh, we still here, still y'all for the final hour and it's, it's gonna be a big one, y'all. Tell a friend, tell a friend if you haven't, you know, go door knocking, you know, whatever you do, cause we full campaign mode right now. A A Ron, Ms. Max, because um, uh, and I am H O Talk Show for all, for everybody worldwide. Get us online if you're local 101.3 FM flagship station, 101jams.com streaming as well. Marshall got us over there on the live as well. Tune in, tune in, y'all. Cause we have the good info for the Charlottesville community and it's that edutainment as we always do. And particularly uh, for our direct listening audience right now, you're in for a treat. Let me preface this one, Ms. Max and A A Ron by saying, I can't, I haven't been able to go anywhere within the past month. At least a good month without hearing this young man's name being brought up and people want to know, do I know him? Have I had him on the radio show? You know, all that good stuff.
So he, you the mayor and he the co-mayor. That's what you're saying, right?
I mean, he may be the mayor.
He may be the mayor. I mean, he killing it out here. Yeah, absolutely.
But, but brother, your reputation precedes you and it's a good thing. Talk about none other than Dom Morse. He is on, he's for the Charlottesville School Board. He's a candidate. Um, and his motto here is student voice, student choice. Dom, thank you for joining us, sir. How are you today?
Yeah, I'm great. Thank you for having me, man. That intro was fantastic.
That's cool, man. You can cut the check to Sir Charles, A A Ron.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Uh, yeah, running for school board, born and raised in the city of Charlottesville, went through Charlottesville City Schools. Um, and really what led me into education, I'm educator now, have been for 10 plus years. Is to uh, you know, my, my experiences going through city schools really weren't that great. And for me, that was like, okay, how can we turn a negative into a positive? Uh, so it's been my personal mission uh, to innovate in education. Uh, and so that's what I'm trying to bring into the city schools right now. As an educator, that someone, someone that's in the classroom every single day, uh, working with teachers to create projects and helping uh, those teachers execute those projects.
Nice, nice. Ms. Max, were you chiming in?
Yeah, uh, just to back up a little bit, um, Dom talked about uh, his experiences in city schools not necessarily being favorable. Uh, what, what issues did you see that you're trying to correct or rectify now?
Yeah, um, so we, we, uh, most of us are pretty, pretty aware of that New York Times article uh, that went out, what about 2018 or so? Um, and some of the disparities that we're talking about today in terms of the school system, those are the ones that I lived. Uh, so I had a lot of people I played football, basketball with, my neighbors growing up in the neighborhood. You know, not being offered that opportunity into those higher advanced classes. Um, and then for a person that was in those classes at, at some point, um, to realize that my, my peers weren't being prepared to compete with other people just in our own school building. Um, so I've realized that that was a disparity. Um, and, and that, that really hit me as well. Uh, I had honor, honors levels classes at Buford Middle School. And then I was going to transfer to Charlottesville High School, right? Moving on. And the guidance counselor said, you're not prepared enough. Well, why not? Why not? Right? Cause I, I passed totally fine. I was totally fine in terms of my grades.
Right, right.
So we, we have to keep thinking about um, how we're offering classes to students, which the school board is doing. I think that's a fantastic job. Um, but I think we can do more. Um, and the reason I say that is because as we have um, this kind of this model of push in, right? So we have high level students, standard level students, whatever their level is, they're still in the same classroom. Um, but how can we then engage those students at the same time? COVID with virtual school, a lot of people have realized that students aren't engaged. So what I'm trying to do is think of a different model of instruction so that we can engage our students. We're sitting right here in the studio, right? Wouldn't it have been nice to do this while you were in high school? A lot of students want this opportunity, um, but they, they also need help from teachers to get to that point. So it ties into the social studies curriculum, math curriculum as, as, as they're going into whatever their interest and their passion is.
Y'all heard it here first, cause I'm gonna follow up on you on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we are working on like an internship fellowship kind of thing.
Oh, right.
You know what I mean? Like to, to help sort of, cause you know, we're part of the Seaville Inclusive Media Project. It's uh, you know, I M H O Talk Show, Charlottesville Tomorrow and Vinegar Hill Magazine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you know, so we all working together. So yeah, I mean, like we love to get the students in. Of course, COVID held, held us up a little bit, you know? But now hopefully we're, we're, you know, we're on the decline of that. But man, I gotta ask you something you just said. Do you feel like that like gifted classes and whatnot are, are like another form of segregation? Because I go through that with, you know, like with my boys as well, when it comes to sort of like the social and academic. Sometimes, you know, um, like being in juxtaposition, but when you look at the reason for like gifted programs, honors programs, um, instead of figuring out like a good mix of, you know, maybe the, the kids were taking a little longer to get it. You know, working better with the kids who already got it. You know, cause I heard your story about like, well, what was it about you? Like that were, for her to say you're not prepared, right?
Yeah, I don't know. And I have to say, you know, being in middle school, I was kind of naive. I don't really understand. My mom and, my, my mom uh, apologizes to me even to this day, like I didn't know enough to question. Um, so like.
That's important. We need to talk about that.
I was gonna say, so part of me is making sure that we have parents and we support parents and bring parents that have gone through the Charlottesville City uh, School System that have education trauma of their own. And so now that they have their own kids going through the school system, there's this power imbalance. Because the parents are starting to relive their negative experience through the school system. So now they're trying to find ways like, do I advocate? How do I advocate? This is kind of the quote unquote authority, right? So how do we include the parents? And that's, that's what I'm trying to do, uh, one thing at a time. But to get back to your question in terms of um, the higher level classes, AP dual enrollment. It, 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 it very well has been used um, as a methodology for segregation. And the way that we can kind of address this issue is what the school system has started to do already. Um, is to, you know, have every level in a classroom.
Right.
But the thing is, we can go a little bit farther. And we can go a little bit farther by looking at the standards. Instead of grading kids on how much work they do, let's grade kids on their mastery level of those standards. So now we have the opportunity to say, if you feel like you don't want to go on a higher level of, I don't know, Algebra II.
Right.
You can say, I just need to master these standards, these standard level.
Okay.
Right, right, right?
Okay, I got you.
That way you have a diverse classroom, but every kid has that opportunity to say, I'm gonna stay at this level or I want to go beyond. And that is not a new approach. That's an international approach, actually.
Just, we just doing what we do over here all the time, right? Which is nothing, but, right?
No, I feel you there, man. So.
You got, oh, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, A A Ron.
So um, first thing is, my first black male teacher was in the sixth grade.
Okay.
That's the only one I had. Everybody else was a female until I actually got to college. Shout out to you.
Thank you.
Because I, you know, you were dinosaur. Hopefully we're, we're losing the dinosaurs, but you know that you're a dinosaur. Um, you touched on something that I think is really important, which is the education system and how kids are learning. Are we ever gonna get to a point, and you can talk about this as broad as you want to, or you can do just however you want to. Are we ever gonna get to a point to where creatives and teachers like you will have the authority to teach to the kids the way you know that they're gonna receive the information on a local, global? Or because to me, that's always been what the issue has been, is that you got some of these teachers that feel like they're boxed in. Because they're like, yo, I, I got these ideas, man, I got some trap plan, I got, we got, we dancing, we, I'm serious. You see it all the time and kids are learning and kids are enjoying the learning process. Even having a level of seriousness to it, but then you also have a segment of teachers in the population that are saying, we still want to do it the old school way. Are we ever gonna get to that point to where we'll have the right people in place to where we can let you guys do what you do? Which is we need to let the people that want to educate kids, educate kids.
Well, I, I hate to do the shameless plug, but if you vote.
If you vote for Dom.
Then you got at least one personal school board that can help create that vision.
Right, right.
So for me, the, the city of Charlottesville, um, has been so reactive and you just talked about that a little bit in the last segment as well. For me, when we talk about the model of education, we have a new superintendent. You're gonna have at least one new school board member, right? Um, you have reconfiguration and renovating buildings. This is a perfect time to start thinking about a new model. And that's what I intend to do. You know, I've, I've talked to a teacher maybe about three weeks ago and she actually left the school system. And she left our school system because she wanted to innovate and she kept getting pushed back. So you know what she did? She started her own school. So we, we lost talent.
Say it again.
We lost talent.
Right.
So yes.
But she's helping kids, but we lost talent.
She's helping kids, but we lost talent, right? So yes, we can get to that point. Um, but we need to start having that conversation now. We need to make sure that we bring that, bring all the teachers into that conversation and not dictate that to them, but have them help create a new model. If you think about this, if we were to create an education system right now, would we do it the way we're doing now? Most people say no. Most people would say no.
Right.
So I want everyone to come to, to the table and think about what type of education do we want for our kids? For the next 10, 15, 20 years. And to get to your point, yes, we got some creatives. We got some creatives. And my intention is to create policy that unleashes that talent from the teachers. And by doing that, I'm telling you, the teachers, the really, really good teachers are gonna flood this city.
Yeah.
They're gonna flood this city.
Now, the, the new school that you're talking about, is that a local, I'm sorry, Max, I'll kick it right to you, but is, is that a local school? Did she move elsewhere?
Uh, she started her own school out towards Crozane.
Okay, okay, okay. Because, and I'm, I'm gonna kick it over to Max for, in, in just a second, but I, to follow up on that though, I'm curious about your, your thought on what we need to integrate within our public schools versus um, the needs, or if you see a need for charter schools?
Yeah, so I, I currently work at a charter school. Uh, most people know what it is Murray High School. We changed our name recently to Community Lab School. And the intent for that, that school is to innovate in curriculum and education philosophies. So it can then be spread out into other Almar County Schools. But as someone that grew up in the city of Charlottesville, I want to see those practices implemented in my home, in my hometown, you know? I don't want our kids to, to miss out on that. Um, so you know, I, I believe we are such a small school district that we can incorporate that into our current schools. I don't think there's a need for that, but I'm always open to that conversation. In Virginia, charter schools are a little bit different in the sense they're not like Detroit and DC where you have public money, then you have another company coming in. Charter schools here are, their intention is to be a lab, to innovate and then distribute. Anything that a, a charter school does, that's what we do at Murray High School, Community Lab School. Anything that we do is intended for the broader population. So if we're gonna do a charter school in the city of Charlottesville, that needs to be the focus. But I believe since we're so small, we can do that in-house. And I'm, I'll just spoke with a professor at UVA, at Curry Education that I've worked with as uh, Murray, excuse me, as Community Lab uh, did a nice renovation over the last four years in terms of our model and she's helped out with that. We, we, we got some support. We got some support. We're not starting from scratch.
Alright.
So we can do that in our, in our city for sure.
Ms. Max?
Yeah, so actually that's, was one of the comments that I was gonna make as far as, you know, your ideas to bring innovation to city schools and the support that you, that may or may not exist on the Charlottesville School Board. And just, you know, whether or not you have, your colleagues will align with your vision. I was gonna ask you to, you know, kind of speak to that fact um, of working alongside people to get things that you're talking about done. Because, you know, I, I think uh, we, it would be remiss of us not to act, not to mention the fact that, you know, politics plays a role. And so will you have, you know, will, will other people help you kind of lay the pathway for the things that you're talking about to actually happen? The other thing I wanted to mention is the, the part about teachers and um, you know, what, what can we really do to, to place uh, or bring school teachers to, to city schools that look like the students that you are specifically trying to reach, but that can reach all. Who buy into uh, the, the teaching, I guess, methods and just the direction um, that you speak of. And um, yeah, yeah, I guess just those two things, just those two things. Cause I mean, kids learn better from teachers that look like them and can relate to what they are, you know, how they're living and what they're dealing with. So. Yeah, and that's, I know that's gonna struggle, you know, nationwide. Yeah, yeah.
Well, uh, let me stick on the first point really quick in terms of school board members. The school, school board members that I've spoken to are supportive. But at the same time, I believe that, you know, it, it takes a different generation. And that's what I hope to bring to, to see that, that, give that insight of not just being in the classroom every single day that I have. But, you know, I'm only 29 years old. So, you know, being able to, to understand that education of old, just like you were talking about earlier, like we can't perpetuate the system, the old system. We know that doesn't work, right? So school board members, I think they realize that, but not really sure of what the new model should look like. And I think based on my everyday experience, I can help provide some of that insight, collaboration with our community partners, um, such as Curry Education. Now, in regards to uh, teachers of color. You know, it's a, I don't wanna, it's, it's not just a school issue. It's just not, it's not a system issue. It's a community wide issue. I've spoken to so many uh, educators of color. And quite often, it's just kind of like the spirit of Charlottesville. They're coming from Richmond, they're coming from DC and they get to Charlottesville and they say, what is happening to our, our people of color here? Right? There's such a disparity. And then as they try to make those changes, they get pushed back. So if we don't value them, right? We don't respect them. We don't, we don't collaborate with them to help our, you know, most needed population. Then obviously they're gonna go somewhere else where they feel like they can make a change.
That's a fact.
You know, with uh, African-American teacher fellows, we can, we can get teachers, right? It's about keeping them though.
About keeping them.
And he ain't even mentioned the bag, with the bag too, which is another issue. Teachers being underpaid and, you know, you know, so go ahead, Max, I'm in the country.
No, I was just gonna say that's precisely the point that I was trying to get to is that, you know, to, to get to, to where you're talking about. It's, it's an uphill climb and you better be prepared for some opposition, so.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Um, we, we have to prioritize the student facing positions in the budget. Um, and we, you know, we have to cut some of those programs that we feel like aren't giving the best results or aren't serving all kids. But we can always advocate to, you know, our state legislator, slature, uh, to ensure that we get additional money.
One more question for you, Dom, before we let you go. Um, talk to me a little bit about the youth entrepreneurship facilitator, your position. Cause obviously we're business people here, we, so how, what are you doing to get the kids engaged about getting to the bag, man? Like, I know, cause I know, that's the one thing I've learned, cause Charles and I both got kids. They may not listen, but if you talk to them about making some bread, Max knows this too, them kids, their ears perk up a little bit and they're like, okay, you know what? We not talking social studies today. We are talking about making money and creating opportunities. So tell us a little bit about that stuff you're doing here.
I think you can do both and that's what I do uh, every single day is helping teachers create projects, right? Then helping those teachers execute those projects so that we can um, really foster that innovation within our students. Really foster and facilitate their interests, their passions, their identity within that curriculum. So then when we look at, you know, economics in the social studies and civics curriculum, and then we say, okay, what are your ta, your talents, your passions, your values? And then do a two-week project on entrepreneurship and at the end of it have a city market and kids are on fire.
Yes.
That's the type of stuff that I want to bring into city schools often. Even during virtual school, my colleagues and I did 20 projects for our middle school kids, 20 projects, right? That is the type of project-based learning engagement. Um, we're really thinking about the students of who they are as people and not just saying, here's the content, you know? Turn in as much work as you can.
Get an A, even though you ain't understanding it anyway.
What's the demographics of your school?
Yeah, um, let me see, off the top of my head, um, I mean, I have to be honest, we're, we're, we're probably about nine, about 85% Caucasian. The rest is um, a, a variety in terms of Hispanic, Black, Asian. Based on, and this is something that we're working on in our own school, um, because it is a charter school within Almar County. Once you have applications, and when I say applications, it's really just a kid saying, I want to go here. It's not asking what previous work that they, that they've done. It's just saying, hey, I want to come here. Once we have application that fills capacity, we have to go to our lottery system, right? Unfortunately, so.
A lot of cities are like that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So this is the reason why I'm trying to expand this and bring it out. Um, because the building can only hold so much, but the system itself, the community itself has the resources. I'm telling you with community partners. Uh, as, as my team, as we go into the community and ask business partners to collaborate with us on projects, we're told no, almost every single time. Excuse me, told, we're not told no. So we're, they're always willing to collaborate with us. I'm sorry, I apologize, I apologize to them wrong. They're always willing to collaborate with us. We're almost never told no. So I, I think bringing that, that, that model to the city uh, schools is gonna be fantastic. I think we're small enough to do it. Um, and we have community resources and able to, able to do that. And the way I see it is unlocking street smarts, right? In the, in the classroom. The, the book smart kids, whether it's the current system or a new system that's more uh, hands-on, they're gonna do fine either way. But now what we get to is the ability to unlock the street smarts and those kids being able to engage with the curriculum in a different way.
Yes.
Amen, amen.
Yeah, I gotta ask you, saying all that, um, because this has come up before in the city before. Do you think that a boy's school catered to African-American boys would be beneficial?
You know, uh, I don't know. And the reason I say I don't know, um, I, I think it's beneficial in the sense that we can support our kids in that way. But at the same time, I feel like we're small enough that we can do this for everyone.
Okay.
And let me put it maybe this way. If we were just to talk about just charter schools alone, and if we say that there's a charter school that's gonna be uh, implemented within the shi, city of Charlottesville Schools, then we're trying, most people will start to question, well, is that, you know, is that for, you know, parents of, of wealth, right? Maybe Caucasian parents and trying to pull away from the system.
Right.
So I, I think we have to be strategic in how we think about that. I'm open to listen to that conversation. My fiance goes to Virginia State right now, so I, I definitely support HBCUs.
HBCU, homecoming weekend.
Yeah, it is. Hell State. So I, I understand the thought process behind it and I can tell you that there are, um, there are staff members within the school system themselves thinking about this. There are community members that have great influence thinking about this. So I think it's something for us to, to discuss, but I also think it's important for us to understand that we have an opportunity. New superintendent, at least one new school board member, uh, as we do this reconfiguration process. Coming off of the, the COVID lockdown, we have an opportunity to really be a, a leader in the nation of education. But we have to be forward-thinking. We can't be reactive. So if we start that process, you know, in the next year or two, right? Then we can start being a leader for the nation and having other people come to us to find out, how should we do education after post-COVID lockdown? How should we engage, engage our students of color? How should we engage all students really, right? A lot of students, we, we have to battle with phones, right? Education is now in the, in the, in the entertainment industry.
Spot on, man. Man, you got my vote.
If you get, you know, if you win the election, how, how we gonna get some more bus drivers? Don't tell me about that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Max, you know, you right, man, cause there's, there's no bus drivers anywhere in the world. Like, everybody looking for bus drivers, man.
Extremely undervalued.
Yeah, so there, there are a couple of different ways to, to think about this approach is one, with any, anyone with a, a CDL, right? Um, in comparison to bus drivers. The bus drivers are doing a harder job and a much different job. How often do we ask, you know, the local truck driver to throw, you know, 30, what, 60, 90 kids in the back? And have to man them and safely get those kids to.
A lot of risk involved.
Yeah, 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 right.
Should I add bad kids? Or I'm not allowed to say that?
No, we ain't saying that. All kids are good. All kids are good. We just haven't untapped their potential and engaged them yet.
Except for Ray Ray, Max. Ray Ray, no. Ray Ray been bad since he died.
Somebody get him.
Ray Ray needs a, Ray Ray needs a, a person, a person that he can lean on.
I was Ray Ray, so I know. I'm good, we good.
I was Ray Ray at one time too.
Almost got a little Ray Ray, yeah.
But we, we always need someone to engage in and then foster that. So that, that, that's one thing, thing to just think about. Another thing to think about is how do we complete their day? Bus drivers, you know, driving the morning, might do some field trips during, during the day. And then they drive at, you know, taking the school, taking the students back home, right? Can we bring them in, in different capacities? Maybe they are instructional assistants. Maybe they, maybe they help with the substitute teacher shortage in addition to being a bus driver, right? How can we provide that training to get them to work in our school system completely? Not just drive and not just see the kids, you know, for, you know, a couple of hours a day. But really, and they already are a part of our community, but enables to see those kids in the, in the school as well and engage with them in a different way that way.
But you know, Dom, so like I said, my mom was a bus driver for many years and she did vote. She did vote. She was a substitute teacher or teacher assistant and she drove the bus morning and evening, um, afternoons. And um, you know, I, I used to, I remember being younger feeling so sad for her. Because my mom would like slave all month long and make in, in 30 days what I made in a week or two.
Well, that was my next point.
He, he took the words right out of my mouth. We gotta get it, we gotta get the bag for them, man.
Yeah, well, and that's what I mean by prioritizing student facing positions, right? It is greatly important to have central administration staff. I'm not saying that they don't do good work. I'm not saying that there are, you know, are terrible programs within our school system that we need to cut. But we need to collectively, um, and that's the role of the school board too and, and city council is to advocate. State level, national level, how can we get dollars to our school system?
Right.
To help facilitate this. Um, so that, that's part of it, absolutely. Uh, you know, just the school system itself is, when, when we think about the level of demand to, to, to be in classrooms, to prepare, to, to engage with students. It's a lot. It's a lot. But those people go into it knowing that it is an act of service. We serve students and at the end of the day, it's all about the students. So for me, it's about prioritizing uh, student facing positions, uh, including bus drivers, our cafeteria staff. As we ask them for additional training, uh, to make sure that our kids have access to quality food, right? And being able to fix that food uh, fresh. So as kids are going through uh, the school line, they can, they can get fresh food. And that's, those are some of the things I want to focus on to make sure that we, at the end of the day, we are serving our kids.
Right, that's what it's about. And, and so I gotta ask, with that new money that's being, you know, potentially can be spent. You know, it, it kind of alludes to the earlier conversation on how one movement can get overshadowed or hijacked by another movement, right? So you gotta remember the teachers. I, I know Aaron mentioned the bag like every time he talked, but uh.
Right, man. Cut the check.
But I mean, um, like we just real quick, what's your, you know, um, I guess your prioritization on that? You know, when we think about all the things that COVID has sort of spawned, that we gotta start spending money on. But we can't forget, we have teachers that still feel underpaid.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I'm living it. So I, I know exactly what you mean. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't forget it. I don't forget it at all. And uh, I advocate, um, I support any teacher that advocates and wants to collectively advocate and bargain for a higher raise. And, and really improve their, their environment, working conditions and, and thinking about what it, you know, what it looks like in terms of salary as well. So I support that. Um, and you know, I have to tell you, I, I talk to teachers, whether they're my colleagues in, every day in school or just people throughout the community that are working in the city of Charlottesville. Like, you know, it's, it's important um, to, to really respect the work that's being done in the classrooms. And with virtual school, a lot of parents understand how much work that takes.
Cause Ray Ray ain't going nowhere.
Yeah, buddy. Man, Dom, thank, you know, you know, what I love most about this conversation, Max and Aaron, is that it's like, like I feel the authenticity. You know what I mean? Because you get some people in here, you know, that, that get, that, that freeze up in front of a mic or some things are off limits. But me as a voter, I feel like authenticity is what I want. Like I may, we could even disagree on some stuff. But as long as you believe it and, and you gonna stand by your word, nothing but respect.
Oh, if I can touch on that just briefly.
Yeah.
You know, leadership is a balance of listening. Mr. Alexander, I've been talking about that a lot lately. Listening, just close your mouth and listen.
That's right, that's right.
We know it well, Dom.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the other part of leadership is, is having conviction, right? When we, when we struggle through issues and then, you know, we're getting, you know, pushback and there's, you know, social media out there and people want to push back and say, you're not doing a good job or you should be fired or whatever it is, right? You have to stand to your conviction, right? As a leader. I mean, if, if we're not gonna do that, what are we leading?
You ain't leading nothing. I don't lead you off a cliff.
Yeah. And that gets us back to being reactive again.
Right.
So we need people in these positions that are thinking about not just, you know, a news article that was released a week ago or a few years ago, but looking at situations five, 10 years from now and really putting us on a path and creating that vision that, that includes everyone.
Right, that's a fact.